Okay, well, rise please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which is theirs. One nation under God, indivisible, one liberty and justice for all. Okay, roll call. Claudia?
Here.
Alan?
Here.
John?
Here.
Tracy Allen?
Here.
Doug?
Here.
Barbara? Barbara?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Stephanie?
Here.
And Al?
Here.
Oh, really?
Is Jesse there?
Google me.
Jesse there?
Uh, Jesse's not in.
I'm sorry, Pat, I can't hear you.
Pat, you're on mute too.
Thank you. Jesse's not able to attend tonight.
Is Noel there?
Yeah.
And Joshua?
I'm here.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings about public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the vision of this act, the Riverdale Regional Board of Education has caused notice this meeting to be publicized by having the date time in place thereof since the record, the Ridgewood News, and the Town News newspapers, the constituent borough clerks and borough libraries, as well as posting in the school districts, principals' offices, faculty rooms, and board office. According to New Jersey Public Law 2001, Chapter 226, the smoking or use of any tobacco product is strictly prohibited anywhere in public school buildings or anywhere in school grounds, including but not limited to the parking lots, grassy areas, and athletic fields. Violators subject to a fine not to exceed $100.
This is Stephanie. The mission of the Riverdale Regional School District is to provide a safe, student-centered environment in which each student is valued and respected, to challenge each student to reach his/her their potential, to nurture every student's intellectual, social, physical, and emotional growth, to promote a healthy work ethic, a passion for learning, and a respect for oneself and other, to develop responsible citizens for our diverse community and an ever-changing world, to continue to involve our community in an active partnership, to provide all students the opportunity to achieve and exceed the New Jersey Student Learning Standards and the New Jersey Core Curriculum Content Standards.
Thank you, Stephanie. We now have a segment for public comments on agenda items only. There will be a segment at the end of the meeting for public comments on anything that is not currently on the agenda. Please limit your time to three minutes and be respectful with your questions. Mark, do we have anything? Nothing, Mark? Okay. Patrick, do you want to introduce our presenter tonight?
Thank you. It's my pleasure to, once again, bring back before the board Matt Lee, who is our New Jersey School Boards Association Field Service Representative that services the Riverdale Board. I think you've been with us about five years now, Matt. I'm not quite sure if it's that correct.
Yeah.
Matt is a familiar face to most of the board members because he has provided continuing professional education for us, which he will, once again, do this evening for a presentation regarding ethics. And then, he's also helpful whenever we're doing or arranging other types of professional development, which we do have scheduled for March 15th, where we're bringing in another representative from New Jersey School Boards, Vince DeLucia, who will be talking about hidden bias in school systems. So without further ado, I turn it over to Matthew.
Thank you. Patrick, hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Excellent. So as Patrick mentioned, this is sort of our annual ethics update. As you all know, school board members and school officials are governed by a Code of Ethics, which is a result of the School Ethics Act, which was passed in 1992. And part of that requirement is that you review ethics every year. And many boards, probably yourselves as well, will review this at reorganization time, but it's typically then just a look at the 10 tenets of the code, and then you move on to other business. So our intent with this presentation is to give a lot more depth to the presentation, to the topic, and especially to provide you with details of some of the most recent advisory opinions and ethics decisions to help guide your conduct in terms of governance in the district. So I will begin now by sharing my screen. And y'all should be able to see that. Al? Can you see that, Al?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. So to jump right in, I mentioned before that the School Ethics Acts was passed in 1992. And the idea here is that the legislature thought that it was important that the conduct of members of local boards and administrators hold the respect and confidence of the people they were serving, and that board members needed to avoid conduct that's in violation of the public trust or which creates a justifiable impression among the public that such trust is being violated. And we're going to see an example in one of the latest advisory decisions as to just what a justifiable impression might be. So the last part that I'm gonna address as it relates to the origins of the School Ethics Act are these two pieces which really sort of give the background for what we're gonna discuss tonight. The first is that the legislature shot, thought that school board members and administrators should have specific standards to guide their conduct. And that manifested itself in the Code of Ethics, which we're gonna review tonight. And then in addition, it also made the case for some kind of a disciplinary mechanism to make sure that those standards were maintained. And that is, again, manifested in the School Ethics Commission, which we will talk about as well. The, one of the things to remember about this is that even though charter schools sit slightly aside the public school system, since they are funded with public money, they are also subject to this for their boards and their administrators. One of the reasons that we talk about ethics on an annual basis and make sure that board members are very close to the responsibilities that are required by it is that it's a very important component of the New Jersey CUSAC monitoring system. And you can see from the slide here that we talk about one of the governance indicators. Because as you know, CUSAC does look at the governance function in the district, which is chiefly the Board of Education. And this governance indicator states that both Board of Education members and administrators need to annually file a financial disclosure statement, which we'll talk about it as we go forward. And also that the board annually discusses the School Ethics Act and that no member has been found in violation of the School Ethics Act. And if those things are present, then the board earns all of its eight points in that particular indicator. And as anybody's been around education knows, you don't want to lose any points on CUSAC. So the School Ethics Act established a number of things. We already talked about the School Ethics Commission as a way to enforce the standards. We talked about the code as a set of guidelines for administrators and board members to adhere to. We also alluded to the conflicts of interest and the personal and relative financial disclosure statements that are required of officials each year. And then there are also training requirements that are outlined in the School Ethics Act. And those look like this. For every first year, or first-term board member in their initial year, they need to do training on some of the foundational concepts of being a Board of Education member. So we generally refer to that as the skills and knowledge necessary to serve. And then also, board members need to get some background on CUSAC and what are the areas that are monitored by CUSAC, and then also on the CSA evaluation process. In years two and three of a board member's first term, there are also mandatory training classes required, and they are creatively referred to as Governance Two and Governance Three. Governance Two is related to school finance and the role that board members play in that function of the district. And Governance Three is all about student achievement and the ways in which boards contribute to that function of the district. And then, going into each subsequent term of a board member within the first year after each reelection, they're required to take, once again, the creatively named Governance Four. And that is about updates on things related to school law and other appropriate information, which you can see in the next column there. So things about HIB and a district's responsibilities there. And important note, only required once, the initial training in Governance One and the updates in Governance Four, and that's as it relates to HIB. With the School Ethics Commission, it's a nine-member body when fully staffed. There are five members appointed, max from any one political party, that are non-school officials. And they all serve for a three-year term. In addition, there are two school administrators and two school board members that are appointed to the commission. And again, that totals nine when fully staffed. And when we talk about when fully staffed, it's an important number to have present on the commission because there needs to be a six vote, the six votes cast from the body in order to have advisory opinions made public and therefore provide some guidance to the rest of the state as it relates to certain issues. And again, that's part of the SEC's jurisdiction. They issue two kinds of output. Essentially, you have advisory opinions in which a school official can request to determine whether or not some proposed activity or conduct might be a violation of the School Ethics Act. Once again, six votes needed to make those public, and at times in the past, the SEC has not had any more than five members, which meant that there was quite a backlog of advisory opinions that could have been useful to the rest of the state. And once they did get staffed up to that level, quite a few were released at one time, which caused a lot of people to have to kind of scramble to catch up with that. So again, important for the governor to keep that fully staffed. And then the other piece of the SEC jurisdiction is their ruling on ethics complaints. Ethics complaints can be filed by anyone. So a school board member versus a school board member, a staff member versus a school board member, an administrator versus a school board member, or even any member of the public versus a school board member. And these complaints are specific. They are not anonymous. And they have to refer to a specific tenet of the Code of Ethics that may have been violated. So what happens if a school official is found guilty of a violation of the act? Well, there's a progressive set of penalties that can be applied depending on the severity of the infraction. If you start at the left side of this slide, you can see that at the very beginning, there is something called a reprimand, which is a rebuke by the commissioner. It is, generally speaking, a letter that points out the fact that the violation has been found to have been committed by that member. And they are cautioned to refrain from conduct that is in violation of the act. As you move up in severity, you look at the next level, which is a censure. And this is a bit more serious in that you will, like a reprimand, receive a formal disapproval by the commissioner. But in this case, it's, excuse me, it is publicized by the adoption of a resolution by your board. Again, signifying that it's a more serious infraction. The next two are suspensions and removals. In the case of a suspension, there is a link that's recommended by the School Ethics Commission and then formally ruled upon by the commissioner. And once again, there is a formal resolution adopted by your board that acknowledges the fact that a violation's been committed and that you will be removed from school board activity for a period of time as decided by the commissioner. When you go up to removal, that is for the most serious of infractions, and in that case, you will be removed, should you be found guilty, from office for the remaining length of your term. As mentioned earlier, the SEC makes a recommendation to the commissioner, who then makes the final decision, and appeals to that may be heard by the appellate division. This slide really speaks to what you could call a scorecard for the SEC from the 2020 cases. And as we go one by one, starting with advisory opinions, you can see on the left that there were 21 advisory opinions that were drafted, but only one advisory opinion that was made public. And again, that's at the discretion of the School Ethics Commission, what gets made public and what does not. In the middle column, you can see that there are mandatory training violations. So folks who did not complete their Governance One, Two, Three, or Four as mandated by the School Ethics Act. And there were 22 cases of that throughout the state with removals for eight members. Suspensions, there were four members who were suspended for 30 days each. And then there were 10 reprimands. And again, those are all very specific penalties to the circumstances around the infraction. And the last column, you can see that there were 28 school ethics violations considered. 24 of them were dismissed. Four of the cases were recommended to the commissioner, and we're gonna address them as we go further in the presentation. I'm gonna take a quick breath here and ask if there were any questions so far. Okay, excellent. All right. Beginning with the first, or the only public advisory opinion that was rendered in 2020, the pertinent facts around this appear in the top box. And we see that a superintendent's sister-in-law, who was his brother's wife, who was a lunch aid in the district and hired before the superintendent, was selected by principals as a finalist for secretarial role. Superintendent reached out to the SEC, again, this is in anticipation of certain conduct, to see if it was fair to prohibit a qualified and vetted employee to move into another role only because her brother-in-law is a superintendent. And you can see underneath the two bullets, the outcome of that advisory opinion was such that the SEC advised that if the superintendent recommended his sister-in-law, he would violate Tenets B and C, B and or C, I should say, of the Code of Ethics. What they said was that the public could reasonably perceive that this action was securing an unwanted privilege, advantage, or employment for an other. And "other" is a designation of someone's relationship to a school official or a school board member. And that would leave a justifiable impression, remember we referred to that a little bit earlier in the first slide, that the public trust was being violated. Now, it could certainly be that the superintendent really had no role in the recommendation of this person for the job, and it seems that he didn't, as this person was recommended by the principals. But folks could reasonably from the public infer that because of the relationship, this person was being given an unwarranted advantage in being appointed to this role. Further, in this advisory opinion, the superintendent also was reminded that he needs to recuse himself of any discussion on his sister-in-law's employment in her current role as a lunch aid. So those were the two main points from this advisory opinion in 2020. Had I been able to join you in person here tonight, you may recall that we typically will do a little bit of a round robin with the Code of Ethics and have everybody read a little piece of it. But this is a little more difficult in a virtual environment, so I think I'm just gonna roll through these myself. Again, if there's any questions or comments, stop me along the way. And then just a quick note as to what appears underneath each of the tenets. Those are the standards that the SEC uses to determine whether or not a violation has occurred in relation to that particular tenet. So not something we're gonna review tonight, but reference material, if you will, if you're considering whether or not something that you or another official may be doing or proposing to do would be a violation. So beginning with Tenant A, I will uphold all and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the State Board of Education and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. This is really just a way to remind board members that they are officials of the state and that those things that they try to accomplish in their role as school board members can only be done legally and ethically. Tenant B, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. If you're like most board members, you are brought to your service as someone who was interested in their child's education or perhaps interested in a particular issue revolving around the district at the time you ran. This piece of the Code of Ethics is meant to basically emphasize the fact that no matter what it is that brought you to your board's service, once you are seated as a board member, the scope of your involvement and interest needs to expand to all children in the district regardless of any distinguishing characteristics. C, I will confine my board's action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And I will help to frame policies and plans only after the board has consulted those who will be affected by them. And these really are your main duties as a board member, your policymaking, planning, appraisal, and communication. And yeah, this piece of the code really is laying out what it is you are responsible for, and we'll see a little bit further as we go through the code. There are things that the code will specify that you are not responsible for. And here is one right now. Tenant D, I will carry out my responsibility not to administer the schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well-run. So while we defined our responsibilities in Tenant C, in Tenant D, we're reminded that it is not our role to administer the schools, to manage them day-to-day. And it also reminds us that in order to accomplish anything, we need to work together with fellow board members and to exercise our oversight responsibilities in conjunction with other members of the governance team. E, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the board. Again, once we talk about the the governance team within the district, this one reminds you that they are, they are the sole decision-making body and that board members on their own cannot make any, take any action or make any promises or do anything that may compromise the board. F, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups or to use the schools for personal gain or the gain of friends. And there's obviously a an inclination to look at this piece of the code and think only about partisan political groups, especially now that our school board elections are typically done in November along with the rest of the election activity that happens in the fall. But this also should be construed to mean that any special interest group that may have expected you to act on their behalf as a board member, you need to make sure that you are not making decisions with their interests in mind, but all, but only with the interest of students. And certainly not to use the schools to try to gain some kind of advantage either for yourself or folks you know. G, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would deceptively injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its school. Two very important concepts here. The first is that obviously, when we talk about executive session matters, it's quite a serious thing. And you know, those things that happen in an executive session are done so for a reason in that they might cause some kind of damage or harm to folks outside of the board itself, should those matters be disclosed. And also that in terms of communication, board members want to ensure that they're providing accurate information and also speaking to the administration about the things that the board understands to be the aspirations of the community for its school. H, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendation of the chief administrative officer. As board members, we do vote for personnel appointments, but the scope of what we're voting on and the scope of the things that we consider in those appointments are very heavily weighted around the administration of the chief administrative officer. In terms of the personnel function, the board's role is to provide proper policy to ensure that the superintendent is using his or her best practices in order to vet candidates. And also that that personnel appointment will be consistent with the educational goals and the budgeting that the district has put in place. And that is really their role when it comes to personnel appointments. I, I will support and protect school personnel in proper performance of their duties. This one certainly speaks to not only, you know, providing support for school personnel, but also ensuring that those instances where board members are approached about school personnel conduct, that their role is to refer that to the chain of command and to not pass judgment on or to speak negatively about employees of the district. And that leads directly into the next tenant J, which is I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after the failure of an administrative solution. Tenant J specifically refers to the chain of command. Quite often, board members know that will be approached on the soccer field or in the supermarket about things that may be going on in the district. It's a board member's responsibility to point folks like that to the chain of command, whether that be a coach, an athletic director, a supervisor, or principal in order to ensure that the, that there are attempts being made at the source of the issue to solve that. And as those administrative solutions fail, they are referred up the chain of command. And they may eventually reach the board as the court of last resort in the district. And should board members become involved before that, they have compromised their ability to render a partial decision in that issue. So this part of the tenant ensures, reminds board members that they need to respect the chain of command. And certainly, if there are issues that do come to your attention as a board member, it's good practice always to give the superintendent a heads up so that they will not be surprised by those meeting, by those issues at any point if they do. so that they will not be surprised by those meeting, by those issues at any point if they do reach the superintendent. So that is the code. And now I just want to walk us through a couple of the decisions that happened within 2020. And I'm going to ask for a little bit of input for the board, given that we now have some background on both the code itself and also on the penalties that may be assessed. So starting with the case at the top of the page, a board member is employed as a teacher in another district and failed to disclose income received as president of that district's education association. So clearly, since this is a commissioner decision, there's a violation that has taken place here. I'd like to know from the board if you have any sense of what that might have led to in terms of penalty and which piece of the code may have been violated.
A reprimand.
Anybody else?
All right, I'm going to go with censure.
Okay. Any guess as to the piece of the code?
Since I don't have all the numbers up in front of me, Matt, I don't recall.
All right, let's just give it a go. Here we go. Actually, this was a violation of the statute. So that, as we discussed before, the financial disclosure statement is a function of the statute, 18A. And in this case, the penalty was a censure. So looking at the next pa- pa- excuse me, case at the bottom of the page, a teacher parent sent an email to the full board about the superintendent's handling of an incident. A board member intending to email the board used Reply All so that the parent-teacher also received the email that included details of the board's executive session discussion. What do we think happened in that case?
A reprimand.
Yeah, I'm going to go with a reprimand also.
Violated sunshine laws.
Except the different?
That's a big no-no.
I'm going with censure. I'm going with censure on this one.
I wish Stephanie.
And it's G. Yeah.
All right, let's see what we got. G, very good. So confidentiality and potential to violate the Public Meetings Act. Penalty recommended was a reprimand. And the commissioner has yet to assess that penalty. Good guess.
Good guess.
Okay. Oh gee, that was right on the nose. So a board member posted content on a blog that contained deliberate, repeated, and unnecessary attacks, I don't know if there are necessary attacks, of the qualification, salary, and general employment of a tenured teacher in the district. So this is actually before the SEC in late 2019. What are we thinking there?
Censure. What's the next one up from censure?
Removal. Suspension.
Removal or?
Suspension and removal.
I'm, I'm, I'm going I, suspension.
Tough crowd.
I suspension. I'm going C, censure. I love censure. Everybody knows.
All right, here we go. Six-month suspension.
Oh my God.
Violations of C, E, and I. Right? So C, gross misrepresentations meant to interfere with negotiations. That was a detail we didn't provide. Framed policies and plans before the board consulted those who would be affected by them. On E, board members smearing and verbally attacking a staff member in a publicly accessible forum. And then I harmed the staff member's ability to properly teach and perform obligations. And in this case, this is interesting because the board member argued his rights as a private citizen and a required disclaimer was used. So you all may recall that when we talk about things like a letter to the editor, we say that board members need to identify themselves as a board member who is speaking for themselves. So in this case, the board member did that, but they, they ruled that however his status as a board member was referenced several times in the blog, so it was not convincing that he was speaking as a private citizen, which I thought was quite unusual, but I see the point they're making. So that was that case. Moving on to the next one. The commissioner revoked the district's send-receive relationship with an out-of-state district, identifying an in-state district to instead receive the district's students. The decision impacted the board president's child, and the president fully participated in actions that resulted in the passing of a board resolution to continue the relationship with the out-of-state district with tuition to be paid by the district, blatantly disregarding the commissioner's decision and certainly suggesting a real conflict of interest. So what do we think went on in that one?
We haven't had removal yet. Let's try that one.
All right, with suspension.
Let's try that one.
Even though they should be removed.
So there you go. It turned out, given all these violations, that the penalty was a censure, but the, the mitigating circumstance there was that the SEC would have recommended removal, but the member was off the board already.
Oh.
So whoever said removal, you're, you're spot on.
I did.
All right. And the last one. A board member attended an all-expenses-paid conference offered by a potential vendor that the member introduced to the board, excuse me, to the district based on a pre-existing relationship. This occurred not too far from you guys, so.
Really?
Yeah. Been going on for a couple of years, actually.
Did they get to go somewhere good?
I, I guess it depends on your definition, pre-pandemic or? I would say post-pandemic, no.
I'm going with suspension. I agree.
Me too.
I was going to say.
Okay. That's a good call. Six-month suspension. So you can see C, E, and F were all violated. And the SEC's recommendation was to deter school officials from accepting gifts. My understanding is that this board member appealed this and asked to remain on the board while the appeal took place, and that was denied. All right, quick quiz. There is a board resolution to approve the hiring of the architecture firm that you work for. Can you participate in the vote?
No.
No, no.
Resounding no's, that's perfect. So that would obviously constitute a conflict of interest, and those are defined by some kind of a benefit to use a school official or your immediate family. And in those cases, you need to recuse yourself. A number of those situations are listed on the slide, and they typically involve some kind of a financial benefit, whether it be for your business or some other kind of gift or favor or whether there's some other kind of benefit derived from that situation. If board members have a question about that, they should definitely reach out to their board attorney for some clarification. I want to draw your attention very quickly to the bar at the bottom in that. We talk about the fact that the standard used in determining conflict of interest is the SEC definition of immediate family, which is set out in statute. And that is that a spouse or dependent child residing in the same household. You can see that those standards, depending on the situation, can be a little different. So we'll talk about that in a couple of the other slides that we're going to look at tonight. So here we're talking about who qualifies as a relative, and that is important, again, in determining conflicts in some other situations, especially as it relates to negotiations. So you look at this pretty expansive list of people who might qualify as a relative to a school official. And they are quite large, as I said, and the asterisk at the bottom even emphasizes it further in that it's whether it's related to the school official or their spouse, a partner, by blood marriage, or adoption. So it's quite a big list. And in this case, if you look at the citation at the top of the slide, the relative that is used often by the S E T, SEC, that definition is defined in code and is, it's laid out in the Accountability Regulations that took place about 12 years ago. So that is the relative piece. So a couple other quick questions. The district has an opening for a guidance counselor. It would be a perfect job for your nephew who lives two towns away. Can the district hire your nephew?
No.
No.
Mostly you're right. But there are exceptions that could be made if you are trying to find a very specific set of skills or knowledge. The example I often use is if you're trying to hire a Latin teacher and your superintendent can demonstrate that he or she has done an exhaustive search and cannot find someone, and that someone with this type of relationship is capable and qualified, you can appeal to the ECS in order to make that hire. It's rare, though. Next question. The board is meeting to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation. Your spouse is an aide in the district. Can you participate in the discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
No.
Okay.
So this piece right here is what's pertinent to that particular fact. A board member may not take part in the search selection or vote to hire a new CSA and post-hire evaluations and contract discussions. So if you have a relative working in this school, you don't have any of those abilities to participate in. We talked about the fact that you can't hire the relative or board member, but there may be exceptions. And if the relative already works in the district, an administrator can't exercise director-in-chief authority over their own relative. And a board member can't take part in any employment matters concerning the CSA or the supervisors in the chain of command between the relative and the CSA. So that in-district relationship can definitely curtail some involvement by board members. If you have any questions about your own particular situation, your board attorney is your best resource. Next question. The board is voting to approve the memorandum agreement with the local education association. You are a teacher in another district. Can you participate in the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Ah, look at that. You guys are good. So this is a result of a bit of relaxing of these restrictions took place in 2017. This chart going column by column talks about the board member or the relationship to the board member. Second column talks about whether they're a current member of a statewide public teachers' union. The third column is whether they can participate in negotiations, and the fourth is whether they can vote to ratify the contract. The example that we just looked at is this one here. So your self-spouse or dependent child who works out of district but is in a public teachers' union, they may vote to ratify the contract, although they may not have participated in negotiations. And this is asterisk because there may be another conflict present that could complicate this. And that is what's termed heightened union involvement. And that would be a case of that relative being on the negotiations team in their district, being a building rep or an officer in the local there. Then there is likely some kind of a conflict there that would prohibit voting on the contract. And again, your board attorney should have the opportunity to determine that. The last row is worth mentioning because again, this is a little bit less restrictive than it used to be. So if you have a child who's not dependent or a relative, remember that big expansive group of people who qualifies as a relative who works out of district, you may now participate in negotiations, again, absent another conflict, and you may vote to ratify the contract. And you know, all, all again with the blessing of your board attorney. So we talked about the fact that one of the other possible conflicts and the most common is this, this one at the bottom here, this immediate family member has heightened union involvement. And then another advisory opinion that spoke to a little bit less restrictive environment for board members is this A10-18, which says that endorsement of a candidate by a local or statewide union does not create a per se future conflict unless a financial contribution is given and is intended to influence the member. It used to be that the practice was that if you were endorsed by your local union as a board member, you would refrain from any negotiations for the first year of your term. So again, a little bit less restrictive than it used to be. Doctrine of necessity, I don't think comes into play in your district, but very quickly, if there are not enough unconflicted board members to take a particular vote, then the board members can declare their conflicts publicly, post them for a period of time, and then the board can, again, convene as a whole under the doctrine in order to fully participate in discussion and voting on that item in order to get the required number of people to vote. Volunteerism. School board members are not banned from volunteering, but they have to think about a number of things. Generally, they may volunteer for activities including holding an executive position in the PTA, PTO, or HSA in any outside organizations. So that's not a problem. However, if your football club where you're an officer or your PTA comes before the board and is asking for something from the board, it's probably in your best interest as a person involved in both organizations to recuse yourself from voting and discussion of those items. Board members do need to refrain from activities that would create a high degree of involvement with students or staff and also be aware of their ability, if you will, to or opportunity, I should say, to have authority and/or give directions to students and or staff. Those things are not permitted for board members. And it's also a good practice for board members who do come into the schools for volunteer activities, to let the superintendent know that they will be in the school to do, take part in that activity, but limit your activity in the school that day to just whatever that volunteer program was. And then leave the school. Don't treat it as an opportunity to take an informal tour or to check up on things. We put together this kind of checklist, if you will, for volunteering in the schools that will help you be in compliance with the citations you see above related to advisory opinions on volunteering. All the answers in green are what the, what you should be able to answer about this volunteer activity. And if you're uncertain about it or the answer is different than what we have in green, then you need to talk to your board attorney or your superintendent about that planned activity on your part. We talked about interview committees. This is a good example to point out how sometimes over time the SEC changes its position. And if you look at AO4-12 at the top of the page, at 1.02012, which is what the citation refers to, they advise that one or two board members with the administrator's permission and participation can take part in interviews. Their activity is limited to observation and assessments. in interviews. Their activity is limited to observation and assessments, and the CSA has the sole ability to make a recommendation to the board. Just three years later, in A-31-15, the S E C clarified that board member involvement in interviews for positions other than that of the superintendent is not encouraged. But they do say within that opinion that if there are some circumstances that speak to board members being involved, they need to do so under the guidelines in AO-4-12. They did rule in 2010 that exit interviews are off limits for board members in that they stray too far in the day-to-day management of the district. Couple closing points. So as it relates to conflicts, our recommendation is to develop a list of those and to review it regularly to ensure that, you know, relatives haven't changed their stature or standing within their own locals and/or you didn't have any relatives who got themselves into the teaching profession and they present some kind of a conflict for you. Your board attorney, once again, should be your last word on whether or not you have a problem. And certainly if they recommend to you that you should get an advisory opinion, I would certainly follow through with that to ensure that you're in compliance. And we do, in school board notes, which you all should all receive either in print or digitally or both, any of the newest advisory opinions because we do try to keep, well, we do keep up with them as they are issued. Last piece, once again, from an advisory opinion from 2018. I think it's a good closing quote for this presentation. "School officials must always be cognizant of their responsibility to protect public trust, to honor their obligation to serve the interests of the public and the board, and periodically reevaluate the existence of potential conflicts." Last page. If you're ever caught up in quarantine again, there's a lot of like meeting you can do about all of these cases. Even just a rainy afternoon, you can catch yourself up on all kinds of ethical issues. Folks, thank you for your attention. Is there any questions? Okay. Good to see everyone again. Good to see folks are healthy. Can't wait to be back here next year in person to actually see all you guys once again.
Thank you, Matt. Matt, can you send a PowerPoint copy to us so we can click those links instead of trying to type them off the printed copy?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So Matt, before you leave, just want to, again, thank you on behalf of the board for making the time to be here. As some of the public is trying to understand, because I've monitored chat a little bit, presentations like this need to be done in public. They need to be done as a part of regular board training so that, so that board members remain in compliance not only with the school ethics act that we did here, but our other responsibilities as set forth by New Jersey School Boards Association on how to become good board members. And as I mentioned at the very beginning, you've been working with us for about five years now, and I think this is probably the fifth time that you've done this presentation for us as we've moved through it, because this is one of the ones that we annually do and one of the ones that we annually pay attention to because it is so important to our role as school officials.
Yep. It's, you know, once again, the core of it is immutable, right? The code of ethics doesn't change over time, but all the things surrounding it and the, the climate, if you will, about some of these decisions does change over time. So it's important to review these things with a little more depth each year to ensure that you're getting, you know, all of the latest information and all of the latest kind of, you know, feelings around school board member conduct. So I thank you once again for all your attention and possibly be with you on March 15th when Vince comes back to present on hidden bias.
Thanks, Matthew.
Have a good night, folks.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay. Board members, I just want to, on the backside of one of these handouts, there was an acknowledgement of receipt that needs to be signed and handed into Tom. So just make sure you take care of that. Let's move into the student member report. If Noel is still out there, do you have anything for us?
So a lot of the sports have been going on the past few weeks. I know swim started last week. We go back in the pool. So that's pretty exciting. And the theater program is working on song for the new world, and that's going to be streaming at the end of the month.
Okay. Thank you. How about you?
A bunch of the honors societies are trying to figure out how to do fundraisers during this because they need funds to, you know, have their scholarships. So what they, I know the Science and Spanish have both decided to do a raffle. So they're going to do that. So it's like a 50-50, and the proceeds go to their respective scholarships. So that's happening. The Chris Bowl team has their first competition this Saturday, I think. So that's something they're looking forward to and they're excited about. It's on virtual. So they're using like something similar to teams in order to do it when it would normally be in the school. And I think the last thing is that the business, one of the teams in the Business Club, they're part of a competition of, I think, 200 students. And one of the, and it's like a mock stock market challenge, and one of the teams is in the top five currently. They were at the top position. So out of these 200 teams, all the schools in the Northeast, one of ours was in the top, and we're proud of that.
Very good. Thank you very much. My report tonight is short, and Patrick stole some of my thunder. I just wanted to remind everybody of our visit from Vince DeLucia about the hidden bias training for March 15th. We did add a March 1st meeting, if I'm not mistaken, correct? Okay, that was not on our original schedule. So we do have a meeting March 1st. And Vince will be here the following meeting on March 15th. And also, I believe Tom has, during the end of this meeting, some of the board requirements that Matt had mentioned before, as foreign governance 1, 2, 3, 4, and any other requirements that any other board members will have. With that, I will pass it on to Mr. Fletcher for his superintendent's report.
Thank you. Four items for, to come forward. I'm very pleased at this point to announce that we have three finalists for the National Merit Scholarship Program. To put that into perspective, approximately 1.5 million students participate in the PSAT program and the, I'm sorry, and about approximately 50,000 of those are stratified into the highest scores. Then you can become a summary finalist, et cetera, et cetera. Finalist is one of the final, if you will, aspects of the scholarship program, which would allow these students to then qualify for scholarships at the schools that they wish to attend. So we go from 1.5 million down to about 15,000 students across the country that qualify as finalists. And we have Paul Young, Sophie Ding, and Ori Ben Yosef, who were selected as national merit finalists for Riverdale. We'd like to congratulate them all. My second item is I just want to bring and mention to everyone that the weather has become unsettled, as is typical in February. We are expecting some more inclement weather this evening. I will be having a conference call with regional superintendents tomorrow morning at 5:00 a.m. If we were to have an interruption, we would likely go to a full virtual day tomorrow. Just want to give people a heads up on that, which we would notify early in the morning, should we go in that direction. We, we are also predicted, or there is predicted, I should say, in the area, some other unsettled weather for the end of the week, Thursday into Friday, which could also impact our schedule as we draw close to the February break, which is at the end of this week. We will then have President's Weekend and the following few days off, and school will return on the 22nd. I bring that up because I want to remind everybody that while we are experiencing some decline in the infection rate with COVID, and there are some positive signs that are, that the increase that we did see after the holidays is stepping backward, we could easily find ourselves back in that situation and that there are still travel restrictions in place for those who leave New Jersey, which requires quarantining on the way back. So as we get to that holiday period or that, that break period, I'll also remind staff and students and families of those obligations as we approach that period of time. So just ask everybody to continue to be vigilant with the issues of COVID because unfortunately, we are seeing numerous infections here at the school, and it has penetrated into our student body. And we currently have the basketball program that was under quarantine will be returning, and our hockey program, I'm sorry, our hockey program's been shut down. And just today, I had to close the wrestling program for two weeks because of infections. So we need to keep, keep in mind that the infection takes place at the local level, even though we're seeing some declines at the state level. And then the final item is I want to continue the discussion that I started at the last board meeting regarding changes to the schedule for students. We will be implementing a new program, a new schedule, once we return from the February break beginning on March, I'm sorry, on February 22nd. Basically, it is, we will be eliminating the all-virtual day on Wednesday and having students come to school five days a week, where we will have a rotating, continue the rotating A-B cohort. So as an example, we would have cohort A on Monday, cohort B on Tuesday, cohort A on Wednesday, cohort B on Thursday, cohort B on Friday, and then continue over the course of the next week and the next week and the next week. The schedule would, or calls for shortening of the periods that we have in the morning by a few minutes and adding those to the periods that we have virtually every afternoon, so that every period now has the same number of minutes in it, regardless of whether it's in-person or virtual. And what would happen is that over the course of a two-week period, one cohort would be in school three days a week, the second cohort would be in two days a week. The following week, it would be reversed. The cohort would be in three days a week, the other one would be in two. And over the course of a four-week period, all students in all periods would balance out as to the number of in-person and virtual periods that would take place. Once we have that into motion, it is our intention then to open the cohorts to allow students who would like to attend more frequently beyond just the elimination of the Wednesday virtual day to attend. And we would approach it in an organized manner by first addressing all students that have IEPs. Currently, our self-contained class attends four days a week. With this, we would open it up to all students with IEPs. Next, we would go to all students that have 504 plans. Then we would go to all of our struggling learners who are defined by our, sorry, I, our INRS process, which is intervention and furlough services. And then finally, we would be able to open it up to general education students. After the survey that we did last week, it still is, we still will have the opportunity to bring more students back to attend on a more frequent basis. And, but however, we would still have to have anybody that is attending more frequently sign or acknowledge at least that the fact that depending on how many students do eventually return to in-person instruction, that we may have to revert back to a more clean approach to our cohort period, or cohorts, cohort A and B. I'll be communicating this information out to the community of this week and send a reminder during the following week. What we would do, just to be very clear, is institute the new schedule on Monday, February 22nd, when we return. That would be the first week that we would eliminate the virtual schedule Thank you. That would be the first day that we eliminate the virtual schedule on Wednesday. And then we would begin the process of bringing back the students in that stratified approach that I just, excuse me, mentioned. That concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Patrick. Let's get into the committee reports. Budget and finance, Joe.
All right. Well, we met on January 21st, and that particular meeting dealt with going over the audit, which will be presented at our next meeting. Just, I don't want to take steal any of Stu's thunder, if you will, but the bottom line is it was another clean audit, no recommendations and all too, which is good. So we'll wait to the next meeting to go through that. And we also talked a little bit more about this upcoming budget, and we are meeting tomorrow evening to talk about that. So to let the rest of the board know, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at something here as well. And we will have some of the preliminary numbers together that we're going to be talking about. And just some important dates to know for the rest of the board is the state aid, the governor's address is tentatively scheduled for the 23rd. So as Tom says, therefore, it's probably the 25th when we'll actually get those numbers for state aid. But we're looking pretty good with our preliminary budget. And the initial vote on that is Monday, March 15th. And then a final vote on that is April 26th. So just everybody kind of get those dates in mind. But we will have the board, the board, the committee is looking to make sure that the rest of the board members have the preliminary budget, as we said, the time as soon as possible so that you'll have some time to review that before that preliminary vote on March 15th. So that's the end of my report.
Thanks, Joe. Doug, facilities and security?
We haven't met, but I'll be talking to Tom this week about setting up a committee meeting within the next week or week and a half.
Community relations, John, and technology.
No meeting since the last one. Probably will have one coming month.
Okay. Curriculum, Claudia?
I'm just waiting for Pat to send us out our new schedule. We haven't met.
Okay. And last, policy and governance, Stephanie?
We haven't met. Nothing major is coming down the pike, but there's always something to review at some point.
Okay. And I guess just to recap, Patrick and Tom will get schedules together for future meetings for all the committees. Okay. Let's move into the consent agenda. May I have a motion for consent?
It's Claudia. I'll make a motion.
Joe will second it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on the consent agenda? It's pretty short. Okay. Tom, when you're ready, please. Go call.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Young?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
Okay, our first vote is under miscellaneous number 11. Number one, whereas provides that the school district may request a waiver of compliance with respect to the district's participation in the Special Education Medicare Initiative program for 2122. And whereas the Riverdale Regional Board of Education desires to apply for this waiver due to the fact that we project having fewer than 30 Medicaid-eligible classified students and participation in SEMI would not provide a cost benefit to the district based on the projection of the district's available SEMI reimbursement for the 2122 budget year. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Riverdale Regional Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent to submit to the interim executive county superintendent of schools for the county of Bergen an appropriate waiver of requirements. Tom, maybe you could just give a little recap on all this mumbo jumbo law speak for us?
Well, it really has to deal with the number of children that Riverdale has that does require some Medicare Medicaid issues. And Riverdale does not fall in that category. It's a, the threshold is generally more than we have. And therefore, we have not been wanting to grant this type of funding. It's not beneficial to the district.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Stephanie. I'll second Claudia.
And Tom, when you're ready for roll call here? Unless anybody has a question, anyone have any questions on this? Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
I would like to make a motion, or do we have a motion, to bring an item forward from the executive agenda?
All right, Al, I'd like to make a motion to move the executive item for the appointment.
Okay.
I don't have it right in front of me, so you can read it.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second, it's Claudia.
Okay. I have it here, Joe, I'll read it, okay? Under the salary adjustments correction, I'm sorry, under E, appointments, it is recommended by the superintendent that the board approve the appointment of Elon Su as teacher of Mandarin, long-term substitute in the high school at a rate of 248, 18 per diem. BA Step 1 for the period beginning January 26, 2021 and ending June 25, 2021. Tom, when you're ready.
Claudia?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Tracy Allen?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
And Al?
Yes. Okay, well, get into old business, new business? Anybody have anything?
I was just gonna say, on the agenda, Tom, can you let us know, are you gonna email us about the board requirements? Or are you gonna discuss it this evening?
Right now, I think I've put a memo together for you guys to show you who was required to do what. It's in your packet. Okay, so there's only one, two, three, four people that are required to fill their school board requirements.
Anybody else have any old business or new business? Okay, if nobody has anything, we'll get into public comments. And as I stated before, you are limited to three minutes of the time. And please be respectful in your dealings with your questions. And Mark is gonna facilitate this part of the meeting. So Mark, do you have some hands up or questions for us?
We actually have three written questions already, so I'll read those in order. And then I'll get to the hands after that. The first question kind of goes back to the new schedule, the planned schedule. And it's from Susan Garcia. And she asks, can you delineate or post a schedule length of class time, lunch period, length of time in school, et cetera? What is the net increase of in-person instruction for the average student?
So the answer to your question is yes. We'll be sending that information out with an example of the schedule to everyone. And the net increase depends on if someone is attending or or not attending and choosing to be virtual regarding the, you know, the personal choice that people made. So it's gonna be a little different based upon whatever choice people have made during the course of the process.
The next question is from Karen Gleysteen. What percentage of students are currently attending in-person/hybrid? And based on the survey results, what percentage are expected to be in post-February break?
So that's been a difficult question for us always to knock down. Once we started in October, I was given a regular report regarding students and their attendance. What we've been finding happening is that while we do have people who have actually chosen to be virtual entirely, and those who have chosen to be hybrid, we have a number of students, a number of families where students are attending on a more casual basis. So even though they may be identified as a hybrid student, and I'm just, as an example, expect them to attend school on a Monday and a Thursday, they're coming on Monday, but not on Thursday. And we do have a mechanism to account for everyone's attendance, whether they're attending in-person or virtually. So it's very difficult to narrow that down. However, to give you some numbers, we're experiencing about 170 students per day attending in the middle school. And before, or in January, we were experiencing about 100 and 100 students on one day and 110 on another in the, attending on the high school. However, over the last two weeks, the middle school has remained relatively stable in the number of students attending. And the high schools begin to tick upward. And now we're seeing approximately 110 students attending and then 120 students on a different, on the other day by cohort.
All righty, the next question is from Zenobia Busha. Why was rotating A B cohorts selected instead of fixed with Wednesday changing? This does not align for parents that have children in OPS and RD.
I, what we've done is we've tried to notify, we did notify and inform, or I did, I should say, notified and informed both Oradale and River Edge as to what, what was, what our plans were to increase in-person instruction. So I can't answer as to what individual nuances will be based upon the other schools.
This is Zenobia, if I may. My question is just, I get it that virtual is gone now and you want instructions. You could have just gone alternate A and B for Wednesdays and just left the Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, Friday as it was to align with the OPS schedule, right? Now it's just triple the chaos for parents to drop, bake, lunch, all of that every single day, every single day of the week. I just, for a parent that has kids in both school districts, it does not make sense to me. It would have been easier to just alternate the Wednesdays than to change the entire schedule. If it's something that can still be considered, it would be worthwhile.
Thank you.
All righty, we have hands raised. And Daniela Bosco, you can unmute yourself, please.
Good evening. I want to start off by, by asking the question, how are we as parents supposed to, how are we as parents supposed to have our children's best interest at heart when our children are receiving the schedule, proposed schedule before we are? The in-person school day has shrunk with each revision that the school board has made. These kids are going to school less today than they were in September in-person. The River Edge School, grades K to 1, has only recently extended the school day from 8:30 to 1:15, four days a week. But yet, our older kids can only make it to 11:30. The two-week alternating schedule makes it hard for working parents and even more impossible for working parents with younger children, as Zenobia just mentioned. I'm a working mom with a child in middle school and two children at OPS. My second grader goes to school from 8:30 to 11 o'clock every day. My middle child goes to school from 8:30 to 12:40 twice a week. My seventh grader will be going to school less than my second grader. Who is asking for this schedule and who is it helping? The parents and the students that are going into school want more time in school, not just a day, but more actual time, more hours in a day. The local districts, or other local districts are looking to extend the local day, but yet we're not. We should be looking for ways to extend the in-person day. They can make it past 11:30 in-person. When OPS created their hybrid schedule, they worked with Riverdale's schedule to ensure that the hybrid schedules were the same and pickup times were different. Zenobia alluded to this. The fact that our schedule has changed so many times and is, shows me that we're inconsistent and that we're not being cohesive and we're not working with the three districts in our group. Not to mention the fact that this is going to be confusing for our children now. Which week do they go in, three days a week? Which week do they go in twice a week? Why can't we just have more hours in the in-person day? Why can't we extend past 11:30? Why can't we offer one more class? That's my one question. My other question is why are we having an hour and 15-minute lunch break for my children? I, as a working professional, don't get an hour and 15-minute lunch. Our children need more in-person time. They need more hours in their day. That's, my other question is I want to know if we have plans, if we're starting to look for plans of what we're gonna do in September. And really, just the biggest question is why can't we go past 11:30? When we started off the schedule, we started off at 12:50. It was 8:30 to 12:50. We've decreased it. Then we started going 8:20 to 11:55, and now it's to 11:30. I'm just trying to understand the logic here.
So a couple of points. I just want to address, I don't know what you mean by have students have the schedule before parents do. I've only had a conversation with the Board of Education two times in a row here. And as a courtesy, I shared the schedule with our staff only. I did not share it with students, nor did I share it with anybody outside that, that community. So if students got the schedule, they didn't get it from me and they didn't get it from a member of the Board of Education, it must have been shared by others. Which I find unfortunate that that would be the case to do that. Secondly, the issue regarding the frequency, we're trying to just increase the number of times that kids come to school. I think what the first schedule that we had looked at regarding this is, was way more confusing than this. Basically, students attend school every other day. So cohort A attends, pardon me, beginning in, on Monday when we return, cohort A would attend on Monday, cohort B would attend on Tuesday, and then it just goes like that for the remainder of, for the school year. Or until there's a relaxation of the rules associated with social distancing in schools. So students are just gonna attend school every other day. It shouldn't be overall more complicated than that. The reason for the extended period of time at lunches is so that some, so that students can, whoever's attending here can leave, get home, get to a place where they can have lunch and then prepare to go into the virtual classes in the afternoon. And that same thing applies to our, our staff and their ability to be able to prepare to move into the classes in the afternoon. The biggest problem that Riverdale has opposed to the other two buildings is that we share staff between the high school and the middle school. It is important for us to be able to maintain a morning schedule and an afternoon schedule as far as our periods are concerned, which is why the periods one through four and five through eight, or five through 10 at the, at the middle school are clustered together. It allows us to share staff between the buildings. And if we were to deviate from that model, what could happen is we end up having the inability to share staff. And we have a bigger problem with, with filling the positions that, that we have here. And finally, what we're trying to do is balance the number of minutes per period that students are experiencing. So in the current model, they have one length of period in the morning, a little different in the afternoon, and then on Wednesday, it's entirely different. This way, all the periods will be the same for the remainder of the period of time. Now, as far as plans for going forward, yes, it is our, our hope and desire that as, as herd immunity becomes more and more of a possibility for our communities through either vaccine or people recovering from the, from the virus, that we will be able to increase instruction more and more. And it's certainly our hope that we would be able to, as the weather turns nicer, have that ability to bring students back, particularly those who haven't had a more traditional experience. We are certainly looking to, whatever's going to be available to us in September. Biggest problem that we have is that despite the fact that we seem to be experiencing some good news regarding the decline in the number of infections, the rules associated with opening schools and having students in school have not changed since, since July, when they were put forward by the Department of Education and the Governor's Office. So the social distancing, the number of students that you can have in the classroom, the precautions that need to be taken are still in effect. And unfortunately, all three of those things are impacting our ability to continue to move forward.
The next raised hand is Vanessa B. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Hello, members of the board and Riverdale community. Just wanted to take a brief moment, and I'll make this brief as we appreciate there is much to cover this evening. So I'm speaking on behalf of the parents, alumni, and students interested in promoting diversity and inclusion in Riverdale. We thank you for the action taken in adding the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion section of the climate survey. We want you to know, we are doing what we can to bring awareness to this section and look forward to next steps once the data is made available. Your efforts do not go unnoticed. But I do have a question actually for you. By when do you believe those results would be ready?
So the portal for students and families to complete the survey extends to, I believe, it is, yeah, thank you.
February 19th, right?
So I believe it, I was gonna say 18, but thank you, it's February 19th. Generally speaking, we get the Generally speaking, we get the quantitative data in about three weeks, and then the open-ended questions another week or so after that. Excuse me. So I would think that we would have that data available to us by the end of March.
Okay, about a month, give or take.
Give or take.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, and we're grateful for your time and attention.
I'd also just like to remind you, you know, as we mentioned twice earlier this evening with school boards, school boards will be making a presentation on March 15 regarding hidden bias in schools, here as a part of the public board meeting.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the written questions. Elaine Dong from Oradell. The new schedule adds less than an hour/week to in-person instruction, from seven hours, 10 minutes to eight hours, seven and a half minutes out of 32, or 33 total hours a week. When are you going to offer full-day instruction, or at least meaningful increases?
As I just indicated, that was answered already.
Answered already, okay.
Yes.
The next question also asks about, what would we take away from in-person learning and not adjust the schedule to keep them in school longer? And it asks about the lunch schedule, which you had mentioned previously. And, let's see. Okay, next is from Susan Garcia. A follow-up to my question, what is the net increase of in-person instruction on a weekly basis for those students who have elected hybrid this whole time? And there's a second question, and that is, what percentage of teachers are full-time remote currently? Can you provide a breakdown by subject?
So there are answers to all of those questions. Off the top of my head, I don't have it all here in front of me, particularly the questions regarding the number of staff who are teaching remotely. And of course, that number fluctuates because of exposures and infections. So, and as the board just approved this evening, or will be approving, we've had some other non-COVID-related medical issues that we're dealing with. So that number fluctuates, unfortunately, over the course of a month, quite frankly.
And from Daniela Bosco. Thank you for your time in answering my question. It is my understanding that the rules set forth by the state of New Jersey are recommendations. There are some districts that are allowing lunch, for example, and others now allow the children to be separated by four feet instead of six feet. The state recommendations are changing, and thus so should our implementation rules. Thank you for your consideration. And then from Elaine Dong, a follow-up. Has Will, the BOE, looked or looking to work with any government or private agency to provide our teachers with vaccinations?
We have offered to the Department of Education to be a site for vaccinations. They have, no one has brought that out to the remote locations other than through a pharmacy or an established government site. But we've offered to do that, and we've offered to be available, and both of our school nurses have been very aggressive in trying to get information into the hands of the staff in order to become vaccinated. So we're hoping that that opens up even further for our staff.
And a question from Fran Kelleher. Is there a plan in progress to have students safely eat lunch in school and offer full days?
As I've indicated, at this point, we don't have that ability to do so. We continue to examine the different operations that are available to us, but there are some restrictions that due to the nature of the lunch program here at the high school and the nature of the lunch program at the middle school, just, we don't have the space available to be able to do it, and unfortunately, we don't have a local downtown, if you will, that students can easily get to have lunch and then return.
And we have raised hand from Debbie Bargiacci. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. I have a question. What is, how is, what is, oh, I'm sorry. You know, for the students who have been coming to the school, we're just about at the end of our rope to see the value of coming to school when the teachers are teaching to the screens versus to the students. So we are just about at the end. Because again, my daughter has come in from day one, but as a parent, I'm finding it really hard to justify, yes, go in just so that she's not seeing any other students on the screen, the teachers are, for the most part, teaching to the screen and not to the students that are physically in the classroom. So do you, do you understand that that's a big issue? And if so, how are you addressing to fix that going forward after the break? To encourage more students to come in to see the value of it? This is very sad for me as a parent who values academics.
Well, I mean, I know, and you and I know this because you and I had a conversation about this not less than a week ago regarding the difficulties that are taking place with this matter. Unfortunately, with a number of students who are attending virtually, there is a management issue between the number of students that are in the classroom and the number of students who are participating in the virtual world. And it's a very difficult thing for anybody to do. It's easier for all involved if we're either all in-person or all virtual. The split between the two is, it's a very difficult thing to do to manage it. We have and are making more technology available to the staff through cameras that would, if you will, free a teacher from sitting in their, excuse me, at their desk trying to manage it, and we're trying to figure out some ways. And we do have some staff members who are excelling at this. And as a result, our supervisor of technology is in the process of having professional development to assist teachers' transition better. There's no question about it, I'm not gonna, you know, sugarcoat this, it is a very difficult proposition, and I can appreciate how it is for you as a parent when your student says to you, there's only two kids in class, I don't want to be there.
Thank you.
Next, we have a question or comment from Elaine Dong of Oradell. Have you considered using outside contact tracers when there's a COVID exposure event so that contact tracing doesn't have to shut down at 3:00 when school ends, which seems to result in school closure, even when exposure hasn't been confirmed?
I think what you're referring to is there are three opportunities during the course of, since we opened in October, where I closed the building twice in the middle school, once in the high school, because of the difficulty of contact tracing. And I don't know if it was you or some other members of the public that I had some communication with over the fact that when we're notified of an exposure is critical in our ability to respond based upon staff. The unfortunate aspect of this is that the contact tracing just takes time to be able to get to it, and the, we work with both the local health department in River Edge and the Bergen County Health Department out of Oradell in order to try to expedite these matters. Sometimes they're more complex than others, and sometimes we have multiple infections taking place at one time, which only complicates the situation further. So we try as best we can to complete it as quickly as possible, and only affect those that necessarily, that need to be quarantined. But there have been three times where we had to take some additional time in order to do contact tracing, and as we're all aware, two of those three times resulted in us in closing the school for 14 days.
From Daniela Bosco. Will the survey results be shared with the parents?
If you're talking about the youth truth survey, yeah, that'll be made available.
And a question from Jane Kiernan. Are those cameras available in all the classrooms so the teachers can stand and make eye contact with the students in the room? I completely agree with Debbie. My son shows up and is the only one in the room. I can't blame him for not wanting to go. This is a huge problem.
We have sufficient cameras to put it out into every classroom. However, again, as I've indicated to you, it is a, it is a very difficult proposition for any individual to be able to manage both in-person and virtual participation.
Any more questions or comments?
Is that it, Mark?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, I guess we move to adjourn at this point.
Stephanie, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Claudia will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
9:42, Tom?